I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:01 PM on August 3, 2023. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the proposed agenda for the regular board meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on August 3, 2023. For the record, the board members present are Tara Herbocic, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Iliana Garza Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. The next agenda item is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Canada, do we have anyone? No? Okay, thank you. Dr. Eldridge, are there any reports by the administration?
Yes, Mr. Garrett will address item 5G.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. So yes, ma'am, and the board, 5G is the attendance credits purchase, and that's how TEA determines our recapture payment. So they call it attendance credits, we're only allowed so much wealth per student, so once we maximize that wealth, every dollar past that goes back to the state. So they call it attendance credits, but it's kind of a fancy way to say recapture. And this is our recapture payment we pay every year. So if you have any questions, I'll take them.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Garrett regarding this item? Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrett.
And Joe Gillan will address item 5J about communities and schools.
Eldridge and board members, communities and schools, we have had CIS for a little over 15 years in the district, and currently, we are going to have eight elementary campuses this next school year and two middle school campuses. So we are excited about continuing that relationship with CIS and what they bring to the district and to the campuses. Each campus that has allocated a CIS professional can service 100 students at the campus. That's with parent permission, and those students are recommended by the counselor, principal, and possibly a teacher. Mid-September, that's when CIS will begin meeting with those students at the campus. They help with academics, tutoring, attendance, social and emotional issues, and they work in conjunction with the counselors. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gillan. Board members, do you have any questions regarding this item? Ms. Derrick?
Ms. Gillan, how are those schools identified? Is that a district identification, or is that something that CIS does?
That's totally up to CIS. They do ask us for recommendations, but they look at at-risk students at the campus, the number of students at the campus, and also students that qualify for LEAP. Yes.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Okay, I have one question. How do we determine the impact that they're having, like via a report or some data? What's, how do we determine that?
Yes. So CIS gives us data at the end of the year, I do have that. They work with their counselors to get that data, but we also send out a principal survey at the end of the year to see if CIS has met their expectations, how it's working at their campus, and areas of need.
Thank you. Board members, any additional questions? All right, Dr. Eldridge? No additional reports? Okay, next is item number four. Board members, do you have any questions regarding any other consent agenda items? Okay, so we've reached number five. Audience members, at the close of this meeting, the board will participate in emergency response training, so we kindly ask that you exit the boardroom so that the training can be completed. The training should take approximately 15 minutes to conduct, after which time you may re-enter the boardroom. Board members, we have reached the end of our agenda for this pre-meeting briefing, and we are adjourned at 6:05 PM.
I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on August 3rd, 2023. Board members and district staff members and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as Trey Crum from the Redeemer Church provides a message, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Tara Herbocic and the Pledge to the Texas Flag led by Sally Derrick.
Yeah, good evening. Let's pray together. God, thank you for taking care of us and our community as we start school on August 10th. Lord, as the spouse of a teacher, many have been working hard to serve students in our district. Bless them. Bless the hard work of the educators in CFP. Bless the students and families as they prepare for another school year. Bless our community and district leaders as they lead humbly and submissive to your will. Guide us as we dedicate this year to you. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Welcome on this Thursday evening. We are so excited to be one week out from the start of the 23-24 school year. And we're so proud of our teachers and staff who have been working tirelessly. Many of them came back to work today and to prepare for this school year. And we're so thankful and blessed for what they're doing in our community to prepare for our students. And we also want to thank our community for all these school supplies that they're helping to gather to make sure all of our kids are ready for the first day of school. So, welcome to the new school year. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to the goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbocic, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza Rojas, Randy Shackerman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Persons who wish to speak, daring audience for guests, must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. Our next agenda item is Item Number Two, Special Presentations and Recognitions. Item 2A, Recognizations. Ms. Parnell?
Good evening, Ms. Hatfield, Dr. Eldridge, and members of the board. As you make your way down, we want to start our recognitions tonight by honoring our own school board president, Ms. Cassandra Hatfield. And to assist with this presentation is Nancy Klein. Nancy is a current member of the Carrollton City Council, a former CFP Board Member, Board President, and a Master Trustee with TASB.
Thank you. I am excited to be invited here tonight to present the recognition to Cassandra Hatfield of her designation of a Master Trustee through the Texas Association of School Boards. The 2023 Leadership TASB Class comprised of 24 school board members represents Texas school districts of all sizes and property wealth. When I did it, we had a school district with 176 children, K through 12, so a very diverse experience. Participants who completed all required elements of the study program earned Master Trustee status, the highest designation recognized by TASB. After the graduation ceremony on June 23rd, so she's already graduated, Leadership TASB participants joined the ranks of more than 900 school board members statewide who are Leadership TASB alumni. The CFP Board has had a number of Leadership TASB graduates, and I invited past president of the CFP Board Lynn Chaffin, stand-up Lynn, who was on the board from 1998 to 2013, to come also tonight. She achieved the Master Trustee designation in 2000, so that was a few years back. And we would also like to honor the memories of Frank Shore and James Goode, who were also awarded this designation. Congratulations, President Hatfield, and thank you for serving the Carrollton Farmers Branch community with your service in all these areas.
Next, please join me in congratulating the following employees on their new roles in CFP ISD. Our first honoree is Corey Blackburn, excuse me, he's Executive Construction Officer with CFP. Corey has 25 years in education. Congratulations. And family, if you'd please come forward for group photo. This is Mrs. Blackburn, I believe. Next, Amy Bridges. Amy is the new principal at Blair Elementary School, and she has 23 years in education. And her family is here with her, her daughters and husband. Brianna Burrell, Director of Elementary Language Arts. Ms. Ms. Burrell has 16 years in education. And family, if you'd come forward. Shashawn Campbell, the new Director of Elementary Mathematics with 26 years in education. And I believe you have some friends here with you to come take a y'all come out, let's take a picture. Dr. Megan Garza, Director of Digital Learning, 10 years in education. And we have a family member. Next, we have Joe Lapuma, the new Chief of School Leadership. Joe has 30 years in education. And he is a special guest here. There she is, his wife, his wife. Next, we'd like to introduce Chris Moore, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations with 20 years in education. And family, if y'all want to come forward. Sarah Rowland, our new Assistant Superintendent of Special Services with 27 years in education. Sarah Rowland, our new Assistant Superintendent of Special Services with 27 years in education. And family? Katrina Spotsville, our new Community Relations Coordinator. She has 27 years in education. We've got some work family here that's going to come up and get a picture with Katrina. And Leon Shulot, Principal, the new principal at Creekview High School. And family, please come forward. And tonight, we had two employees that were unable to be with us, but I did want to recognize them. Dr. Jose Ramos, he's the new principal at Long Middle School. And Beth Chamberlain, who is the new principal at McLaughlin Strickland Elementary School. So, if you were announced today or tonight, if you would please come forward, we want to get one group shot with all of our employees.
Thank you, Ms. Parnell, and welcome to all of our new additions and all of our promotions. We're so excited for our family. And with that, we will... Hold on, give me a second, I was just so excited. And next, we have District Announcements, so Item 2B. Dr. Eldridge?
I just want to congratulate again everybody in the audience, and thank you families for coming out to support us. Today, we welcome back our teachers to the buildings. Next Thursday is our first day of school. So, lots of new changes and times, and so we want everyone to check our website so everybody knows what time to get to school. Tomorrow, we are having our Employee Convocation at Toyota Music Factory, 4,000 employees, and it is indoors. There has been some talk that it was going to be outside. No, it is inside in the AC, and it's going to be a lot of fun. So, I know the board will be there as well. I just want to thank Communications. They developed a Become a Partner card. So, trustees, you have this in front of you. So, we will be giving out these cards that anybody that wants to volunteer in our schools, you just have the QR code and you can volunteer and help us. So, we're just getting ready for back to school, so thank you all.
Great. Next on our agenda is 2C, an update from PTA.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent Eldridge, and the Sting Board and all the administration. I'm Cindy Castillo, and I'm the 2023-2024 Council PTA President this year. So, I was speaking on behalf of all of our 36 local PTAs. I want you all first to hear our mission, because this is why we're all here. And the mission of Texas PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. We're off to a fantastic PTA year. With the website, joinpta.org, only up and running two days, we already have one PTA that has over 33% of their membership total from last year. Don't they know they have until August 31st to achieve the Head Start Award? Maybe they are single-handedly trying to crush the system like last year. I hope not. But seriously, congratulations to Country Place Elementary PTA and all the CFP PTAs that are already working so hard. On the topic of awards, it's important to recognize Country Place Elementary PTA as the Recipient of the Voice for Every Child Platinum Award last year, with membership greater than their student enrollment. We also had four PTAs earn the Voice for Every Child Silver Award with membership greater than 50% of their enrollment. Congratulations to Early High School PTSA, Good Elementary PTA, McCoy Elementary PTA, and Rosemead Elementary PTA. Not only did we have many PTA accomplishments last year, we already have two PTAs recognized this week as National PTA's Schools of Excellence for 2022-2024. They are Janie Stark Elementary PTA and Creekview High School PTSA. They have worked diligently over the last year or two to build partnerships with parents, staff, and community to achieve specific goals to enrich the educational experience and overall well-being for all students. Now that we have talked about some of the great things happening this year, I want to share our Council PTA Goals. Provide meaningful program discussion topics for delicate meetings, our local PTAs. Have 100% of our local PTAs meeting the standards of continuing affiliation by November 1st. Increase our district membership and recruit Council PTA leadership for coming years. With a good majority of our local PTAs have full boards and are already taking on the PTA year, we have five PTAs that remain in restructure status. Council is committed to helping each of these schools rebuild their PTAs and move into the future. We also have three PTAs that have not reported any board members, and Council will continue to make sure they have the resources to move forward. Membership is open to all. You can join any local PTA at joinpta.org. That's easy, joinpta.org, it takes you right there. If you would like to show extra support, though, you can join multiple PTAs through Council PTA Website Store. Here, you can join all 36 at once or a feeder pattern of your choice. This will save you money from the join PTA processing fees. Here's what our store looks like. So, we are on the Council website, and we offer a membership for $311. That includes 336 of the PTAs. And then we have five feeder patterns representing all the high schools, all the middle schools, and all the elementary schools. So, you could choose any of these and join a group of PTAs all at once. Please join PTA today. The National PTA Reflections Contest will kick off as soon as school opens. This year's theme is "I Am Hopeful Because." Maya Surmedia of McCoy Elementary PTA did a tremendous job presenting her project from last year, following an influence of someone at the Texas PTA Launch Reflections Award Brunch in July. She was one of seven recipients of overall Awards of Excellence, one in each Reflections category. The theme last year was "Show Your Voice." While this is not usually an advocacy year, we expect some issues for public education to be raised in Texas special sessions. This includes legislation for school vouchers. The impact of this on public education under the current funding rules could be significant. Please share your voice where appropriate. Thank you for your continued support and advocacy for our children. Together, we are PTA. And I'm going to walk around and hand out a little reminder.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. As always, PTA is critically important to the success of our schools and the partnerships we have with PTA. We're so thankful, so I'm excited to see what this year brings with all the opportunities. At this time, we will give a brief pause. Oh, you're fine. It's okay. It's okay. I promise. While we're doing that, we're going to give a brief pause. So, if you have... If you want to stay for the meeting, you're welcome to stay. Or if you want to step out of the meeting at this time and go enjoy the rest of your evening, we're just going to take a brief pause and give you that opportunity before we continue our agenda. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. All right, so our next agenda item is Number Three, Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak, daring audience for guests, must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Canada, do we have anyone wishing to address the board? No? Okay. With that, we'll move on to Item 4A, which is Non-Action Items for Discussion. We'll start with 4A, Enrollment Update. Dr. Hamlin?
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge and members of the board. I had the easiest part of this presentation tonight before I handed off to Dr. Maggie De La Rosa to give us the details. I get the opportunity to really express the deepest gratitude to every one of our staff members that made this happen. We had people from many, many departments, Student Services, Virginia Monreal, Elvia Salas, Sochi, Amaya. We had our Student Information Team led by Katie Bondes, Cindy Ozuna, Alita Rodriguez, and Sherri Fitch. And then we had an amazing team of our district nurses led by, obviously, Ms. Sandra Leek, who is across the street providing vaccination support, again, for about 150 families right now. We also had members from our Transportation Team, and I'm going to say JoJo, because JoJo was so energetic and so helpful for our families that were there on all four of the different events, as well as our Student Nutrition Team that was there to help our families. And then, obviously, Dr. De La Rosa will talk about the community partners. But this could not have happened without the effort of our team. And most importantly, our enrollment specialists from the different campuses showed up to help our families upload those tedious documents that they have to upload and provide that access, technology access, to the families that don't have it. And then to spend the time after uploading those documents to actually facilitate the successful completion of the enrollment process for all the families that showed up in those four events. Now, I would like to turn it over to Dr. De La Rosa.
Thank you, Dr. Hamlin. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, President Hatfield, and Dr. Eldridge. Yes, this was such an exciting event. Like Dr. Hamlin, it was a collaborative effort with all the different departments within CFP that came together. We started meeting back in April, trying to devise a plan as to how do we make this happen and have... Give our parents access and opportunities to enroll and just start creating some of these partnerships with our parents. So, we started off planning back in April. We included our Communications Department. Amy Johnson came up with the flyer for the event, so this is Amy's work. And the idea and the purpose for all this was to empower our families with information and resources within our community so that we can have a smooth and efficient transition with the enrollment process. And then the bottom line is that we wanted to start opening our doors, making our families feel welcomed, and start building these relationships with our families. So, with that said, as parents walked in, it was our welcome team that welcomed our parents. They had... We had a sign-in sheet. They had... We had CFP logo bags with waters and snacks that were given to our parents. They also had a checklist. They were provided a checklist, so they knew everybody that was in that space, and they would try to go through all the stations and visit with everybody that was there. So, then from there, they guided the parent to the next station. In the next station, we had our fabulous nurses welcoming our parents, looking at their immunization records, trying to identify what immunizations they needed and if they needed any at all. And then they were able to guide them to the next station. If they needed vaccines, they were guided to the vaccine station. If they didn't, then they were guided into the scanning station, where we had our PMS clerks and all... Everybody else that came together that night to help our parents upload documents into a file. So, then the PMS clerk would just take the file and start enrolling those students. Once the students were enrolled, they would receive a backpack full of supplies for them. And here we have more pictures of the assistants that were there, scanning documents, uploading them into files. The conversations that I've started having with the people that were there were that the parents felt very grateful for the services and the help, because either they don't have a device at home or they still don't understand how to upload documents to register. So, this facilitated that process and really helped the parents. So, the feedback from the parents that they're very grateful that we had this opportunity for them. If we had any parents that have a second language, Carolina with the multilingual department was there, ready to schedule parents for any language testing that was needed at their campuses. So, she was there to do that, facilitate that scheduling, and that way, testing happens before school starts. Our Student Nutrition Department was there also, thanks to Kristin Hess, that was part of the event and the planning piece. We don't have applications ready yet, but they were there to remind parents reapply and where to locate that application online. Our Transportation Department was there also with Mark Hill and Donna Cox, answering any questions that our parents had when it comes to transportation or any routes that are already available for information to our parents. And then the loudest and the proudest station of them all was our vaccine station. We have our partners from Dallas County and Passport Health. They're ready to vaccinate any students. So, they were giving vaccines, anywhere from one to four vaccines per child. And it was the loudest station that was there and the most happening one, too. So, we were happy to see there was a long line, and kids are getting vaccinated. The idea behind all this was get the kids vaccinated so they don't miss out on day one of school. All their vaccines will be ready. We want our kids to enroll and be present day one of school. Some of the community partners that were there also were invited and are always happy to partner up with CFP is Metrocrest. As I was talking to Nadrina at Metrocrest, she said she had quite several parents show up to her station, and the questions parents were asking about the Metrocrest services was, "How do I qualify for the food pantry?" And "How do I get housing assistance?" So, those were the two questions that she was getting from our parents. So, that's good information for us to know, so that way we know how to offer additional services to our parents and information. The Concilio, El Concilio, was there present also. We've worked with Concilio this past year, and they paired up with some of our campuses, giving our parents some nutrition classes. It's a five-week program, Healthy Kids, Healthy Families. They were happy to inform me that they were able to sign up 45 parents for a class. They were happy to inform me that they, they were able to sign up 45 parents for a class. So that makes up about two classes for them, which is really great. They're, they're, they're in Spanish and they're in English, so parents get to choose the language. So that was really nice to hear that information from them. Other community partners that were there also, we had a dentist, a pediatric dentist there that was passing out some swag, but also information for our parents and the services they provide. But we also had a pediatric Little Spurs out there also with additional information if they have any, any needs to that. They were able to offer services and information on that. The Carrollton Lions Club was also there. They sponsored the vision screening. So some of our parents were able to get that service if that, if that service was needed for our littles. And the best part of it was all the smiles that the kids were there. As you can see, we had high school students there, middle school students, and elementary students. From what I understand, the last little picture there was that the child was not happy to be there, but at the end, when he got to pick his backpack, he ended up with a smile leaving our, our event. So that's really great to see because at the end, you see the smiles. It's our parents, they're our communities. These are the people that we serve and that we want to continue to serve there. What was the impact? We're still collecting data. I gathered all the sign-in sheets, and this is the information that I have gathered from the sign-in sheets, is that we were, 279 people of our families and signed in. Out of that 279, 45 of those syndicate, signatures indicated they were new to CFB. So that was really great news to hear. Vaccines, about 1,100 vaccines went out in the four, the four events that we had. I exams, they weren't able to give us information yet. We're still collecting that information. But as far as next steps, we're still continuing to collect the data, and I can have that data ready once everything is collected on here. But we want to continue to work and with a strategic plan as far as enrollment for next summer. Can this be bigger? Can this be better? Absolutely it can. I think this is the first time in the four years that I've been here that we've done something like this. So for me, this is a baseline data piece that we're going to gather. But we are looking to increase our presence in the community because the information that went out, we passed out, I passed out flyers and posters in the different apartment complexes. I dropped off my card. I was making communication and building relationships with the leasing managers who want us in their building to be able to create onsite services for some of the families that are already there. So I'm starting to build those conversations and have those conversations with them there. We're also looking to increase the enrollment extravaganza for next year and add additional campuses, knowing that at the campus level, we did have a higher enrollment there. So we want to be able to at least put out at least 10 more. When I speak to everybody that was involved, our PMS clerks and our nurses and everybody who was there, they want it. And they want it, they want to do it, they want to do it more frequently, they want to do it more. They, they were so happy and excited for this to happen, and they want to see it grow. So I'm just, I'm happy to report that it was a great event, but we want to make it bigger and better for next year. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. De La Rosa. Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Derek?
I'm just going to make a comment that this was a huge undertaking. I mean, this is not just y'all went after one thing. Y'all spread the net and went after all the things. And based on the numbers, I mean, the 1,100 vaccines, I'm just thinking that through. That, how, there's no telling how many kids that was that wouldn't have been able to be in school on day one, which is what you said the goal is. We need to have kids learning on day one. And, I mean, we made a dent in that, which is so exciting. So a big thanks to the entire team that came together to make that happen. And I definitely think you are right in that we can build on that and do greater things again to get kids ready to go, and that way, they can be in the classroom, learning on day one. So, thank you.
Board members, are there additional comments or questions? Ms. Garza Rojas?
I just also want to say thank you so much. This was, this is incredible, and it really is about building community and partnerships and who we have around us. So this is amazing. Thank you. Thank your team. Thanks, everybody who did the work. And I saw a friend in a picture on there, and her smile is definitely what she texted me. So thank you so much for all of your hard work.
I'm glad. Thank you.
All right. Dr. De La Rosa, thank you so much for all of the efforts, and thank you to the team for everyone putting all the intentionality into this, and we're looking forward to the first day of school and this continued growth of this program.
Absolutely. So thank you. Thank you to the whole, the, all the departments that came together willingly and wanting to stay the extra hours. Like, I'm really, really proud of that. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that while I was out doing mommy duties last week and I wasn't present at the event, our secretary, Virginia Monreal, like, she was hands on the ground and boots on the ground, and she really helped out, put this together. So thank you to her as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, our next agenda item is 4B, TASB Policy Update 121. Mr. Marsh?
And I'm not sure how I got put in this order to follow up the extravaganza with policy is quite a challenge. So, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, members of the board, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to give you an overview of the policy update process. So the question is, is how do policies change? Why do policies change? What is the catalyst? Catalyst is changes in the law, case law, regulations, Commission of Education decisions, and mandates from TEA. So you've got to think about that. Someone's got to monitor all those changes, and they've got to compare those changes to the policies. Then they've got to craft the language, and they have to ensure that that language is legally sound. So it's really not cost-effective because that's a lot of resources for a district to have to do. So most districts use TASB Policy Services. There are 1,022 districts in the state of Texas. 1,022 districts use TASB Policy Services. Every educational service center in the state uses TASB Policy Services. You might ask, how much does this cost? CFB, we're paying $3,500 a year. So it's quite a value. So we're just getting to the process, let's just talk about that. Policy Services, what they do is they break it up into updates, and they number them sequentially. We're currently on 121, so that means they've had 121 updates. So what they do is they send that update to the district. And then what we do is send it to this relevant departments, and they review the documents. So example of that is if it's a finance policy, it goes to finance. Personnel policy goes to personnel. Instruction will go to CNI. They review those policies to look and see if we need to change any procedures or processes. When that's complete, we then send the policies to all of staff. That gives them the opportunity to provide feedback. After that, then we send it to you, the board, for your consideration. If approved, we notify TASB. They upload the policies into the policy website for everyone to be able to access. This is the current process, so there's going to be a change starting tomorrow. There's a new step in here, and that's to improve the process. So it's the Board Policy Committee. And the task of the Board Policy Committee is to meet with staff, to look over the policy changes and the impacts it has on our district as far as our processes and procedures. And it gives the board an opportunity to have a more comprehensive understanding of the policy changes. The committee will meet with staff on August the 15th. The committee is comprised of Mr. Bocic, Ms. Benavides, and Ms. Garza Rojas. So we, we're excited to see you on the 15th, so we can talk about policy. So if, when that's, gets out of that committee, then it will be presented to the board at the next regular session, which is scheduled for September of the 7th. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Board members, do you have any questions about the update to the process? All right. Mr. Marsh, you're off the hook. Great presentation.
All right.
I have in my notes here that we can take a recess if we want to. Board members, are you good with continuing to progress? Yes? Okay. All right, so we'll proceed to our next agenda item, number five, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Ms. Garza Rojas?
I'd like to pull item MM.
MM? Okay. Any others to be pulled, board members? Okay. So if there are no other items to be removed, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda as amended? Ms. Derek?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of MM.
I have a motion for Ms. Derek. Do I have a second? Ms. Brady? I have a second from Ms. Brady. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? Raise your hand? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. The next agenda item is number six, Items for Discussion and/or Action. We have an item that was removed from consent, so we'll proceed to item 6A. The title of the item is M5MM. Ms. Garza Rojas?
I was not here for that meeting.
Do I have a mo- motion regarding this agenda item? Mr. Shackman?
As presented, item MM from the consent agenda.
All right. Do I have a second? Ms. Benavides? I have a second from Ms. Benavides. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of six in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention, the motion carries. Next up is item 6B, Consider and Approve the CFB ISD 2324 Student Code of Conduct. Dr. Hamlin?
As you know, this is the time of the year you get the opportunity to approve the new Student Code of Conduct, and I do believe that everyone has been given the one-pager in your packet regarding the changes that we have made. I just kind of wanted to highlight a couple of the changes and to see if you have any questions about any of the other changes that you, you have on the document in front of you. One really is, the big change is that on page 19, you'll see it says, "Sells, gives, delivers to another person, or possesses or uses an e-cigarette." Doesn't matter what's in that e-cigarette. We haven't had that before. So this is going to be a huge change. It can be nicotine, and actually, the way it's worded, it could be empty. But if a student has a vape, then they would automatically be sent to DAEP. That has not been how we've handled just nicotine vapes in the past. So that's a big change, which would directly tie to the one on page 27, the, the capacity at DAEP. And I just wanted the board to know that we really have no intent to fill up DAEP. We are, we have created a procedure for us to use state waiver codes to not send them immediately to DAEP, but we will have them for, for the vapes, especially with nicotine, that they would have another consequence like in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension for a short period of time for the first offense. The second offense, then we would move forward to, that, in that first offense, also, there would be some drug diversion expectation counseling, three sessions of counseling with the parent and student, and then our district counselors. And in that second offense, we would move forward with a possible DAEP placement. But those are really the two big things that are in the changes that we've made for, for next year that I wanted to kind of jump out in front of. But if there's any other questions that you have regarding any of the items that, in front of you, feel free to ask. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Bocic?
So if I remember, the Student Code of Conduct is a document that is reviewed as part of the regi- enrollment and registration process where the parent and the student have to sign that they've read, received and read.
Yes, ma'am.
So hypothetically, if there was a student that might not have seen this document, or maybe a parent that might not have read it carefully, how are we communicating to our students about this change so that they're aware of the seriousness of how this will be considered this year? It's a change, you know, for them.
Right. And you're right. Regarding the Student Code of Conduct, when they enroll, it, it actually even says in there, "By not signing does not mean that you did not read," right? So, so there's that, that accountability piece there. But we are working with campuses to, to really address the changes and, and present it to our students, because we do Student Code of Conduct lessons during advisory periods. So we will be sharing this with our students and our parents, typically that first week of school.
Thank you. Ms. Derek?
Just to build off of that question, so most of our students have already enrolled for this year. Is the Student Code of Conduct that we're approving tonight already the one that's showing up in the registration process that our parents have already signed?
This, since this came in late, this will be actually distributed throughout all campuses that first week of school.
Okay. And then can I ask a clarification on, you said first offense is in-school suspension or out-of-school. Second was the parent-student class. And then is third DAEP or second?
All right, so that, that first offense, in order for them not to go to DAEP, they would have to agree with a drug diversion program, the three sessions of counseling, and then it would be a one-to-five-day placement based on intent and past history for the, for the school year, not last year. The second time would be the possible DAEP placement.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
And the third time and fourth time if that happens.
Ms. Benavides?
I would like to ask about the vape machines. Have the, in the bathrooms that detect that, have those been successful or are they being used?
Well, we are actually in, in the process of installing them now. And I don't know exactly when we're going to be finished, but it'll be finished before the school starts for those secondary campuses.
So that'll help you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
It's going to make it fun.
Thank you.
Okay. One of my questions, with you said the drug diversion program and the counseling. What staffing are we using in anticipation of students needing that support?
We have our two drug counselors for the district, as well as we'll be using campus counselors. They also have an opportunity to go out and seek outside counseling, and if they just prove that they have, are on a waitlist, then we can continue to move forward, because we do know a waitlist is going to be an issue, especially if they're using our counseling program.
Great. Thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions? So this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? Ms. Herbocic?
I move that we approve the 2023-2024 Student Code of Conduct as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Herbocic. Do I have a second? Ms. Brady? I have a second from Ms. Brady. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Our next item is 6C, Consider and Approve Purchase of Fencing for Blair, McLaughlin, Strickland, and Stark Elementary Schools. Mr. Blackburn? Welcome to your first official presentation.
Thank you.
We got you in there real quick.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, board members. Just a brief, couple of slides to present three campuses that we'd like to install new fencing at to help secure our play yards and playgrounds. This is Blair Elementary. This is McLaughlin Strickland. And this is Stark and the planned areas for the fences at all those three campuses. We anticipate continuing to do this throughout the rest of our campuses. but this is just one step in improving our security posture on our campuses. Y'all have any questions?
Board members, any questions? Mr. Shackman?
Mr. Blackburn, welcome. We're glad you're here. Can you give us a couple of specs about the fence? Are they five, six foot? Are they cyclone? What, just?
The fences are six feet high. They're planned to be in compliance with the TEA guidelines for anti-scaling. We're looking at two different fencing configurations, either what you probably think of as a wrought iron fence configuration or a fine mesh chain link. Both of those are considered anti-scaling, so we're considering both of those options.
Thank you.
Ms. Benavides?
Are these new fences or are they replacing older ones?
They're replacing older fences.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Blackburn, thank you so much for the presentation, the information. Board members, this item is also marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take any action? Mr. Hrbic?
I move that we approve the purchase of fencing for Blair, McLaughlin-Strickland, and Stark Elementary Schools as presented.
I have a motion for Ms. Hrbic. Do I have a second? Ms. Derek, is a second. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. All right, our next agenda item is 6D, consider and approve the 2022-2020, sorry, let me try that again. Consider and approve the 2023-2024 Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the City of Carrollton for the Fire Academy. Mr. Marsh?
Dr. Eldridge, President Hatfield, esteemed members of the board. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Joe Gillan and her team in collaboration with Joe La Puma. They've worked for over a year diligently with our city partners to be able to have this come to fruition, and it's a great opportunity for our students. So I will turn it over to Ms. Gillan so she can provide details.
I am very excited about this program. Ms. Derek, I know we've talked about it for over a year, and I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for our students. This will be the inaugural class, starting at Creteview High School, freshman class. And our plan is that cohort, when they graduate as seniors, will have the dual credit hours to leave and high school, go to the paramedic training, and then be able to be employed in any of our local cities as a firefighter. So, and we know that firefighters make anywhere from $75,000 to $80,000 a year. So to be a 19-year-old and be able to have that opportunity from your high school is amazing. So I'm very excited about the opportunity and the partnership with the city, with the fire department, with TCJC. That's the community college we will be working with, and with our CTE department. They have done a great job in working through this. They did a lot of research with the City of Arlington, with Arlington Independent School District, Garland, Lewisville, many districts that have the program. Arlington's program has been in place for 15 years, and they have successfully graduated several hundreds of students in this program. So we're looking forward to Creteview growing this and having the opportunity for our students to do this wonderful career.
Thank you, Ms. Gillan. Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Gillan, thank you. This is an exciting opportunity. Do we anticipate the number of students to be in the program the first year, and then does it grow because first year goes on?
Yes. We are going to start with 20 students in the inaugural class, but the sophomore year, we will add more students. So our firefighter that is going to be our teacher is a graduate of Rice University with a PhD, and he had a significant career change and wanted to be a firefighter. So we're excited about what he's going to bring to our students. He's already met with all of our counselors. He's going to be at lunch, walk the halls, and do all sorts of recruiting at our middle schools and within Creteview. So it will start, we want to start with a group that we can really shepherd and work with and provide this opportunity, and then just, I feel like it's going to grow gangbusters as we move forward.
Ms. Derek?
Ms. Gillan, you know how excited I've been about this. I think this is a great example of our community identifying a need, and then our community coming together to figure out how to meet that need. These are, I imagine, kids that will probably stay in our community, and they'll be our first responders, which is really exciting. I also think this is just the first step of possible, you know, other first responder opportunities for our students, which is also exciting. There's definitely a need in that job market, so for CFB to recognize that and then to find those partnerships is huge. And so I applaud the team for making those connections and making this happen. Just to clarify, when are we planning to start this program?
This fall.
Okay, so 20 students, that our new fireman's going to go out and find them, find those kids somewhere?
We already have the 20 students.
Oh, we already have them? Okay, okay, I missed that part. Okay, okay, I didn't realize we had already had them.
Yes, so without the firefighter, we recruited at the middle school, so it wasn't as exciting. So when they see this firefighter in, at the campus in his uniform, the students are going to have a uniform on during the day. I think that's really going to bring a lot more interest. So we're in the infancy stages as far as recruitment, but we've got a great plan.
That's awesome, thank you.
One other comment that I want to make is that when Mr. Marsh and Dr. Hanlon and I met with the fire team from the Carrollton Fire Department, they brought six firefighters to meet with us, and they were, I think, we thought they were more excited than we were in the beginning. And so we're just head over heels about this program, so thank you.
Board members, any additional questions? Mr. Shackman?
One other thought, is this program scalable so we could fairly easily move it and translate it also to Newman Smith or to R.L. Turner? The kids are going to get excited. We're going to have a significant turnout.
So that's a great question. When we realigned the programs of study, we wanted to have a focus at each high school. And so because we have the law academy at Creteview High School, it's a perfect fit for the Fire Academy. But many of you know we have the EMT program at R.L. Turner. So what we're going to do is have two pathways. You can become a firefighter, or you can take the courses to become an EMT, or you could do both. So the opportunity for students to be at Turner and still participate in the EMT program will continue, because that's part of the biomed program. Does that answer that? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Hrbic?
It's really exciting, and I bet the firefighters were excited, because they're just excited to share their profession and their love of profession, just like, you know, our teachers or others are excited to share theirs. So yet another opportunity, a great opportunity for our kids, not just for CFB, but then when they're done with CFB, and so I think that's great. I think this is part of the bigger discussion that we also had at our study before, and just programs in general, and evaluating, you know, evaluating how do we define success? And I believe success probably looks different for every program that we have. But I think here we are at the beginning of this program, and, you know, can set it up to be able to track what we want to track, the students who are interested, who actually enroll, participate, students that might transfer into CFB, you know, for this program, their progress through the program, do they stay? And then what happens after they leave CFB? All of those are components of success, I believe, but I think it's also something that we have to be aware of to, you know, effectively evaluate which programs, you know, we need or continue or add.
Yes, absolutely. The firefighters that met with Mr. Marsh and Dr. Hanlon were all graduates of CFB. I know, I know, it was great.
All right, this is very exciting, Ms. Gillan. Thank you so much for the information. And I just want to echo what Ms. Hrbic said, that anticipation of watching the metrics on this program and really developing that evidence for this is going to be critically important as we move forward. So thank you very much. All right, board, this item is also marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? Mr. Shackman? All right, I have a motion from Mr. Shackman. Do I have a second? Ms. Benavides, is a second. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is item 6E, consider and approve the designation of a voting delegate and an alternate delegate to the TASCASB General Conference. So with that, I'll take this item, board members. We have typically had a trustee serve as the TASB delegate, and this is our opportunities as members of the organization to have a voice in the direction of the association. We do this by having a representative attend and participate in the delegate assembly. As the delegate, you will review the materials under consideration, which typically includes elections of who will serve on the TASB Board of Directors and the TASB advocacy agenda for the legislature. And you'll ensure that you're prepared to represent the board on those action items. The delegate assembly does meet at TASCASB on Saturday, September 30th, in two phases, and it begins at 12 o'clock. And since, and with that, I wanted to remind you, we have our workshop that weekend, but we're planning to have the workshop end at 11 o'clock that Saturday morning so that somebody can make it to the delegate assembly. Thanks to Ms. Canada for verifying there is not a cost to attend the delegate assembly, so even though we're not going to TASCASB, we are not incurring additional costs to be able to attend the delegate assembly. So since I've served on the board, I've been a representative myself, and I know Ms. Hrbic has. And there, let's see, I said there wasn't a fee. So we have the option of having a delegate and a delegate alternate. So if the delegate cannot attend, the delegate alternate would be able to go. And it has been the practice each year for us to send a delegate and an alternate. So that's kind of some background information about that, and typically, we just have a nomination with majority vote of the board. So this is marked for possible action. Board members, do you wish to take action? Ms. Derek?
I would first like to ask permission, Ms. Hrbic, would you consider being a delegate this year?
I don't know.
I mean, I wanted to ask just to be fair, but I also did know that you very much love being a delegate.
Yes, I do, and I am happy to serve on behalf of y'all.
Then I would like to make a motion that Tara Hrbic be named as the voting delegate for CFB ISD.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Hrbic to be the delegate for CFB ISD. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Brady. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. By a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. So that is our delegate. We also typically would put a delegate alternate. In the event that Ms. Hrbic is not able to attend, we still have someone. Would anybody like to discuss an option of someone to be our alternate? Okay, well, with that, Mr. Bot, okay, Ms. Derek. I was going to say, Ms. Hrbic, you can't get sick.
I'm volunteering myself as tribute. I would be fine to be the delegate, alternate.
Okay, so Ms. Derek is offered to be the alternate. Do I have a motion? All right, so Mr. Shackman is motioning that Ms. Derek can be the alternate. Do I have a second? All right, Ms. Illich, Ms. Garza Rojas, my tongue is tied tonight, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of seven and zero, Ms. Derek is our alternate TASB delegate. The next item is 6F, consider and approve all matters related to an endorsement of TASB Board of Directors. So this item, we have the option to endorse a candidate for the TASB Board of Directors, Region 10, Position D. And a nomination also serves as an endorsement for that candidate. So the information about the candidates you were provided in board book, and so you have that information ahead of the meeting. I want to remind the board that the bylaws for the Board of Directors state that if a nominated individual has received endorsements from a majority of the active members in the region of more than 50%, that individual is elected to the board and will take office after the TASCASB convention has been ended. If no individual receives the majority of endorsements, the delegate assembly ballot will include the nominations, and the list of nominated individuals will go forward. So if the board chooses to take action, this does provide our delegates the information on how the board would like that action to happen, if indeed there is an election during the delegate assembly. So that's just some background information on that. There are two candidates that were listed in board book, and I believe you also had a letter from one of the candidates at your table today, which was asking for our support. So with that, does anybody have any questions or discussion? Okay, do I have a motion on this item that the board would like to consider? All right, Ms. Derek?
I would like to nominate or select Kevin Carbo for consideration for the TASB director. Kevin's been involved for many years. He is active in the North Texas Area Association of School Boards. He works hard and does what's best for schools, and so I would like to nominate him.
I have a motion for Ms. Derek to nominate Mr. Carbo. Do I have a second? Ms. Brady, is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. All right, our next item is item number seven, a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.076 and Section 551.089, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits, security assessments or deployments relating to information, resource technology, network security information as described in Section 2059.055B, or the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. The board will now move into closed session. Audience members, you are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess and move into the conference room for deliberations. The time is now 8:08 PM. The time is now 8:08 PM.
See, I can't wear my hair. I said, does it hold a pen? I thought they were pen holder. Until Maggie's had the other, and I was like, I stuck my.
I'll let all these things. Right, connected.
We found something. There's been some floating around. We didn't know what it was.
Oh, and ours are ours.
No, and I brought all four, all three of them.
Get a reset.
You, I don't know. She showed up.
Well, youngest brother came in last day.
Pizza. My what?
My toothbrush holder. My teeth toothbrush holder. The problems that I thought were notable were breathing.
Probably after, who knows where it's been, probably would never use it again. With my toothbrush.
Have you brushed your teeth in the month?
Absolutely not.
That toothbrush holder. Probably.
Probably, probably.
Go here.
People like bless them for their kids. I feel like they prefer. We did it on purpose where, you know how like someone would do their vice. One of them did ducks, rubber ducks. I must have come with four rubber ducks. Put them out in the staff room. They loved the little toys, and then I brought back the socks. And the guy, I don't know who it was, one of them using. Like socks.
Oh my gosh, look at that.
Did you bring your broom?
Were you mad? Did I bring it with me? Were you mad?
You broke it? Well, I was. She should have remembered.
She was moved by Cory's presentation. Correct? She was moved by Cory's presentation.
I understand you guys are quite the cheer.
Are you trying to outdo this, Robin? Who told you?
We didn't hear the cheer, we just heard Cory's.
Kay, go ahead. Kay, come on.
Tell us confidence your cheers.
Oh, Kelly, okay, yeah, yeah. Well, it's a cyber security tip. Of course you do, well, because you pay off. You guys want new uniforms? Will we get it? Will we understand it? It's probably, if there's a little bit more to it. Okay. So do you feel like you're Oprah some days? Where you just, yeah. Well, there's only like fifty of us, so nobody's gonna ask you. And the other, like, we put the engineers that, they're not gonna tell you. Unless they're perks they keep, they do great. But they're, you know, they're very. Tell, well, and I'll tell you, Kelly's taking our engineers from here to here. They are not hypers to, you know, to that kind of personality. Texture.
We are back in open session and the time is now 9:03 PM. The next item on the agenda is item nine, closed meeting as authorized under Texas government code, including but not limited to section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.076, security devices, 551.082, school children, district employees disciplinary matter or complaint, 551.0821, personally identifiable student information, 551.084, investigation. 9A pursuant to section 551.071, Texas government code, consultation with district legal counsel regarding procedural and legal issues concerning employee grievances pursuant to board policy GDGBA local. 9B pursuant to sections 551.074 and 551.082, Texas government code, hearing on level three employee grievance appeal of Nelson Delgado and deliberation regarding the same. The board will now move into closed session. Audience members, you are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess and move into the conference room for deliberations. The time is now 9:05 PM.
The time is now 9:05 PM.
The time is now 9:05 PM.
We are back in open session and the time is now 10:18 PM. The next agenda item on the agenda is Item 10, reconvene in open meeting for possible action regarding items discussed in closed meeting and Item 10A, consideration and possible action on the Level 3 grievance appeal of Nelson Delgado. Board, this item is marked for possible action. Does the board wish to take action? For the record, let it show that Item 10A, consideration and possible action regarding items listed in closed session will not have any action taken. The board will move to the next agenda item, number 11, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, do you have any comments you wish to make at this time related to the posted agenda? Hearing none, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at 10:19 PM.